Good evening. Good evening.
I'm sorry.
Good evening. Seeing quorum, the chair opens up. The Mashpee Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, May 17th, 2017, 7:00 PM. Being held here, Town of Mashpee, Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. I want to welcome everybody here today. I want to let everybody know that we're being video graphed and recorded. And if you have an opportunity to address the board, please use the microphone so the people at home can hear you. First order of business, I'd like to invite everybody to rise and recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance. Next order of business is review and approval of the minutes of April 5th, 2017.
Shouldn't that say May 3rd? Probably should say May 3rd.
Should say May 3rd, 2017. Is that acceptable to the board that we look at the minutes of May 3rd, 2017?
Dangers of cut and paste.
I was not there, so I'm going to abstain from any comments. There's no -- oh, go ahead, John, sorry.
I'm going to mostly accept the minutes of May 3rd, as written.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our next business is new business, and we put that on as soon as possible because we have two staff people with us today. We have our town manager and our assistant town manager to discuss planning board staff and planning department staffing. I don't know if you want to come up and share the table, or if you want to go to the podium. Okay. Hi.
Good evening. I just wanted to give a little historical perspective from my office, and then obviously answer any questions that you may have. After my appointment as town manager in July of 2015, the town planner and I had discussions relative to his potential retirement in a transition plan. In that spirit, I supported funds to fill a presumed authorized position for assistant town planner. On October 30th, 2015, and after funding was authorized, the town planner prepared and submitted a job description for my review regarding the position of assistant town planner. The town clerk brought to my attention that the position of assistant town planner was part of a reorganization plan that was adopted on October 20th, 2008. Specifically, in conjunction with the Home Rule Charter Commission recommendation, town meeting voted to support the implementation of a geographical information system, or GIS coordinator. The assistant planner at the time, Tom Mayo, was reassigned as assistant planner within the planning department to GIS coordinator, reporting to the Department Head of Information Technology, or IT. Therefore, in order to fill the position that was funded, I believed that the position itself had to be reestablished at town meeting. I brought this identified problem to the attention of the town planner. He inquired about the status on May 3rd, 2016. I consulted with legal counsel and was advised that the appropriate resolution would be to seek an authorization vote at a subsequent town meeting. The end result was a delay in the process to fill the described position. On June 22nd, 2016, the town planner identified the hiring of an assistant planner and administrative assistant as part of his goals and objectives. On August 24th, 2016, the town planner wrote to me and referenced a major omission from the warrant. The town planner stated, and I quote, "It was my understanding that an article would be prepared by town council to be placed on this warrant to clean up the mess created by Article 13 of the October 20th, 2008 town meeting warrant, which has created confusion over the legal existence of the assistant planner in GIS coordinator positions and caused the town manager to halt the hiring process for our critically needed assistant town planner as funded at last October's town meeting. Such an article needs to be placed on the October warrant," close quote. Due to the fact that this position was attached to adequate funding and the circumstances were not considered at the time extenuating, the warrant article was prepared for the May 2017 town meeting and not the October 2016 -- excuse me, was prepared for the May 2017 town meeting and not the October 2016 town meeting, consistent with Section 2-4 of the Mashpee Town Charter. Prior to the May 2017 town meeting, I took the town planner to lunch, I bought, and informed him that a specific warrant article had been prepared to resolve the ongoing issue with the position. This article was prepared and reviewed by town council. So although the town planner did not actually write Article 16, as he eloquently pointed out at town meeting, I assure you that his input and my consideration of his requests had everything to do with it. Prior to the May 1st, 2017 town meeting, I had received correspondence from the chair of the planning board regarding concerns over staffing at such department. On April 4th, 2017, prior to town meeting, I responded to those concerns in order to try to put the decision-making in the proper perspective. And for the record, I did CC the town planner. In summary, in preparation of the long-term financial plan distributed by the town's finance team, there is a compelling need to focus on critical services versus preferred services, projected growth in revenue sources, costs associated with health care plans, and the limitation of the tax dollar, especially as it relates to the projections of 2021. Former assistant town manager Tom Mayo informed me that, in his opinion, in regards to the workload, the justification is not there for additional full-time staff within the planning department. I have not had the opportunity to study the projected workload of the planning department. However, is it fair to presume that demands over the next few years are not the same as the 1990s and those of 10 years ago? I fully understand and appreciate that our comprehensive plan needs work, and other essential functions are important to the interests of the town. I further have tremendous respect for the knowledge, skills, and abilities of our town planner. That is why I chose to fund two part-time positions, which is better than none, despite the fact that other departments were being reduced in staffing. Additionally, I had discussions with the current town planner in hopes that he might consider a limited part-time role after his retirement. With window projects, collective bargaining agreements getting us to the median on Cape Cod, operational needs, capital needs, spiraling health care costs, and the Cape Cod tech on the horizon, something has got to give in order for our collective cost to be affordable and therefore sustainable. With that said, I remain open-minded to your opinions, and I value your collective thoughts as we move forward to try to address your staffing needs.
Okay, so I just have one technical question, and then we can open up. So, okay, so let's see what Wayne has given us.
This is, um, back up the chair.
I was trying to write down those dates. Didn't get there. Thank you.
You can have it now.
Thank you. So, um...
Yeah, you want to X one. You want that? It was written on it.
No, that's part of the whole.
Oh, that's part of it. Okay. Oh, I see. Exhibit A.
So when you referenced the possibility of Mr. Fadala staying on as a consultant, where does that come out of the budget?
Well, as you know, despite the confusion at the town meeting, we authorized a full-time position, but we only funded a part-time position. So the presumption would be it would come out of the part-time funds. However, obviously, that's subject to negotiation as far as the expectation of pay.
Dennis, did you want to start?
Yeah. So what you would tell us, if we go ahead, you're going to only hire a planner part-time? Or is there going to be a full-time planner?
At this particular time, you are budgeted and will remain budgeted for a full-time planner, which obviously you need, and a part-time administrative assistant, which is an additional staff member, and a part-time planner in addition to what you currently have. No matter how that shakes out in the mix, whether Tom decides to stay or whether he's said he's had enough.
My other question though, say Tom's going to leave in January. I think we should have somebody come on as quick as we can.
I agree with you, Dennis.
So he can understand what's going on. I mean...
I agree with you.
You know, the chapter 40 is basic, but...
I agree with you. And I think that's the reason why I felt it was absolutely necessary to budget something for that transition.
Okay, good.
I am completely with you.
Okay. Because I don't want the planner coming in there and be dumbfounded because, you know, he don't know like all the, like Mashpee Quarms, they had so many, you know, re-dos on their permit, like, you know, and Tom knows the history of every one of them, and it'd be good if the planner knew something about it, you know?
I agree. Okay, good.
So my experience working in a planning department that transitioned from one planner to another was that every crazy idea that had some type of trick in it got submitted the minute the experienced town planner left.
Oh, yeah.
It was pretty dangerous. I worked for the Town of Yarmouth. Some things could have gotten through that had been rejected upon review by the experienced town planner. That there were things mislabeled, there were things left off of plans. When there was some scramble and a consultant came in, we realized that some of the people that we thought were community partners weren't. And we were extremely disappointed with some local people, some property owners, for trying to trick us, trick a planning department that didn't have a town planner or qualified town planner at that time. They had qualified people, but not a trained planner. So I just want to give you a heads up that you should expect upon Tom's retirement, a flood of requests. So I think there's one thing that the town manager's office could do right now is set a policy that upon his retirement, that petitions that come into the planning board for review, we automatically request a waiver on the time for that review. As you know, there's certain things, and Tom could probably know them off the top of his head, there's certain things that if you don't act upon them quickly, they become a constructive grant. And that's to keep us doing our job quickly and not hold up development because we're not going to act on it. You're not allowed to do that under Chapter 48. So that's something that I want you to, as the supervisor, the ultimate supervisor of the position and the department, to realize.
What I'd like to do, if I may, is work with the board for the purposes of establishing a timeline.
Yep.
I would like to hold on to Tom for a couple more years, but I think he's burnt.
Would like to hold on to him, too.
But at any rate...
The other thing is that...
I would like to establish a timeline whereby we anticipate the actual date of his retirement, and therefore what we can do is initiate the process, including the posting and advertising, the screening interviews, which I certainly would want somebody here involved directly. And then ultimately, when the position is offered, there is a background check that we've got to conduct before we can start the official appointment date. But as long as we're all in sync and we're all on the same page, I think it can flow smoothly so that your operations are not disrupted at all, and at the same time, we've planned accordingly, pardon the pun.
The other thing that I found was because the town planner, I mean, of course, we're going to want somebody that has all the right education and great experience, they're probably going to need to give their current employer four to six weeks' notice.
And if that's...
So that, so we need, when you develop that time plan, just keep that in mind. That's what we saw in the Town of Yarmouth, that people, they wanted to, they wanted to use all their vacation and then give their notice. So it was, it ended up being quite a way. The other thing is that, you know, Tom Fadala has worked here for so many years, for decades, that his efficiency is very high. So I'm still going to request that there's two full-time planning positions, not the administrative assistant counted in that. Because Tom's efficiency is so high, you're not going to see that same return on just one town planner. You really do need an assistant town planner, too, during this time.
We.
We.
We do, right?
Yeah. Let me ask you, um...
But let me finish that. It's just, he can find stuff, he knows the bylaw, he doesn't have a learning curve, and he's tremendously dedicated, and I'm sure there's plenty of hours that he has not counted on his pay sheet to this town. So I'm going to push this, I'm going to keep pushing it. I really want two full-time professional planners in that department.
Well, I'm easy to find. You know where to find me. I do welcome any of you up to my office. I do have a little more time available now, since I'm finished with all the collective bargaining agreements.
And town meeting.
And what I would also like to do is maybe have some exchanges with you in terms of what the priorities of the board are, because that I truly don't know.
Yeah, I mean, when I started, remember, we were doing that development agreement?
Yeah.
We were here till 11 o'clock at night with Mashpee.
I started, we were here till 2 o'clock.
And, yeah, we don't have a development agreement going on, but there's going to be a time when some of our bigger developers are going to approach us, and we need the capacity to do that.
Yeah, the one thing that I would publicly state, all kidding aside, I really respect and appreciate Tom's dedication, his level of competence, his attention to detail. I don't know how he does it, but each and every time I've asked for a reference or a file, he not only finds it, but he finds it very quickly, and considering how many files he has, I don't know how that's possible, but he pulls it off.
Yep, I agree with you.
He's been a tremendous credit to the town. I've enjoyed working with him, and I really lean heavily on his level of expertise, which is going to create a tremendous void for this community.
Yeah.
He's brilliant. We really appreciate every, everything that he's done. And driving through all the towns on the Cape, right? Which one looks the best? By far, it's Mashpee.
And I've said...
And that's a direct credit to Mr. Fadala.
And I've said publicly, and I know it was quoted, that his thumbprint is all over this community, and that's even if he does retire.
Yeah. I just, I just have a question. When you go out for, you know, to get a town planner, how much are you going to offer them? I mean, to get somebody good, you can't offer them $50,000. I mean, the towns on the...
Well, I'll tell you right now, Dennis, I'm not going to announce it publicly.
No, but I mean...
But I'll be more than happy to have that discussion with you, so that when we reach that point, when we have to post, I am on the same page as you are.
Okay, that's, I just want, all right, so we'll discuss.
Have a discussion, and when it's posted, everybody's going to know.
Everybody knows, but I want to, I mean, if you're going to put this job out for like $50,000, you're not going to get...
I have to stay within the range.
Right, I agree with that.
But there is a range.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what I would like to do is let you folks discuss it amongst yourselves, and then bring a number to me that you're comfortable with.
Okay.
I can do that, Dennis. I can, I can, I can get a gauge.
You know what I mean, yeah.
Regarding the timeline for filling these positions, it's, we have basically seven months left of the year.
Yes.
Posting notices for people who leave other jobs. I would think, as a minimum, before you get somebody in the door, you're talking four months if you start today.
I am ready and willing to start, or instruct HR to start, whenever you feel that the process is ready. But I don't want to be sounding like I'm pushing Tom out the door. Maybe he'll stay a little longer, I don't know.
So, you're done. So do you think some of us should meet with you within the next two weeks?
That's what I would strongly suggest.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, well, we'll volunteer somebody now.
If you can just designate a couple.
Yeah, it would have to be two, not three.
Don't get a quorum. Don't get a quorum.
Don't get a quorum.
Oh, yeah, no way.
No quorum.
And no taping.
Do you have any comments or questions?
No taping.
No, I think you covered it all.
There's no taping device in my office.
Okay, good.
Joe, did you have anything to say?
No, I don't.
Well, thank you very much. I know you weren't here long, but I really appreciate you coming and talking to us.
And I'm going to work on the AC.
Yeah, thanks, that'd be good.
Thanks, because it's always us that suffer. That sun comes in in the afternoon. Okay, congratulations on town meeting. Bye, Wayne.
Okay, what do we have for business now?
Well, thank you, everybody, for letting us rearrange and put that matter really up in the front. Our next item is approval not required. The applicant is Michael Cusack, represented by Kevin Keeler.
Hi.
Good. Location is 42 and 46 Quail Hollow Road, Assessor's Map 3, Block 7. Discussion of possible one-lot subdivision plan concept.
Yeah, I'm the one line staff here, so check through it.
Lot subdivision. Explain what a one-lot subdivision is.
So, my name's Kevin Keeler, firm is, Michael Cusack hired me to work on the project he's doing renovating and adding in addition to...
Oh, can you use the mic, sir? Thank you.
Renovating and adding in addition to the house that he is inheriting with his sisters, which is located on 46 Quail Hollow Road. He's actually buying the property, the portion of the property that is in his own, he's in the purchase, process of buying that, and then he wanted to expand to the left-hand side of the house and renovate the house, and in discussions with the building inspector, determined that it would be impossible to do it with the existing size of the lot. There just wouldn't be any way to be able to get adequate variances and things along those lines. So he purchased Lot 42 next door, and we've been in multiple discussions with the building inspector over that, and we feel we have come to a mutually acceptable footprint for the new house addition and subsequent renovations related to that house, provided that we can merge the two lots together and make them one lot. And so we are coming before you this evening for permission to do so.
Okay, so that explained the one...
All right, rest of our, you don't meet the 150 feet, though. You got 145.
Yeah, there's actually five variances that are going to be required, even with the two merged lots.
Okay.
Yeah, but we've discussed that with the building inspector. And...
But all we're looking at is 150 feet, right, Charlie? I mean...
I don't know what to do about that.
15 foot...
Because we usually say, see 150, and then we go, okay. So this does need approval.
Yeah, but then I think it's too close there.
No, that's 15, it'd be 15.
I need a little bit of background on what the zoning is here. What is it, 150?
Zoning there would be our 3, 150 feet, yeah.
All right, but you've got, you've got two existing lots.
Okay.
Yeah, just merging lots.
One of, on one of which is an existing dwelling.
Okay. I think we're supportive of this, we just want to make sure we're going to do it right.
Absolutely, no problem. We would like that, too.
So we've... Well, it appears, Dennis, the only real thing you're doing is extinguish an internal, an internal lot line. That's really all you're doing.
All right.
Now, whether or not the building inspector will issue a building permit for any modifications on the combined lots, that's another issue.
But, Charlie...
All you're really doing is eliminating a center line, and you're adding property onto an existing lot. Now, it says in Chapter 41, if I remember right, that adding or taking away from a lot so as not to affect the frontage, which is what's happening, you're really adding to it, is not to be considered a subdivision. That's really what you have to determine. You've got the statement in your block over here that you're not making any kind of a determination with respect to zoning.
Okay.
So it would be my opinion that you could sign it as an A and R.
The building inspector was of the same opinion, and this is now going to have to do the zoning.
That's a big question, thank you, Dennis. So what are the variances you're going to have to ask for?
Well, we're going to need a variance for a side yard setback.
Okay.
We're going to need a variance for a front yard setback. We're going to need a variance for a lot not having 150 feet of frontage in the front. And we're going to have, need a variance for building within the no-build zone in relationship to the lake.
So I'm good with that.
Yeah. So where the house is now, that 15 feet, that's all right, right?
The 15 feet right there is, is actually not all right, and the current zoning requires 30.
Oh, the new zone, but the old zone when this was built.
Old zoning when this was built, that's correct.
Yeah, right.
And because it's a pre-existing, non-conforming situation, it's kind of an automatic variance for that one.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
It's a 30.
Exactly, it's a new zone.
Because the new zoning requires 30.
No, no, new zoning, it's 15 on the sides.
David, do you have any comments?
Never had any 30-foot side setback requirements.
No.
Joe?
No, right. Looks good.
Tom, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'm just commenting on this 30-foot side setback. I mean, the sideline setbacks are 15 feet. There's no variance required for 15 feet. That's, that's the actual current rules for the side setbacks.
Okay, well, we're, we're in the process of determining the exact extent of the zoning variances with the building inspector, so we will verify.
Now, the other thing is, these lots are commonly owned?
They, they, yes, the same person is in ownership of both. One's in a trust and one is personally owned.
Okay, so they're in separate ownership.
Yeah, you're right. Sorry, the same person is part of the trust, but it's owned in two separate ways, and the people who are, the trustees have signed off on and given permission to do that. It's part of the application, they're attached to the application.
That you gave us.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm just looking at whether or not there's grandfathering involved here for these two lots, if they were, when they became separately owned from all the adjacent land, which is where the statute works and our zoning law works. That'd be something you'd want to research before you started applying for variances. It might not be necessary, the older zoning that applied at the time, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And all for this, I mean, there's one...
You have a really good point on that side, do our zoning setback. That's definitely something that I...
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
We've never had a 30-foot, we've never had a 30-foot side setback in any district, so...
Charlie, do you have any additional comments?
Just to clarify, but the purpose of this plan is to combine the two lots and make one, correct?
Correct.
So somehow the ownership gets joined by some sort of a conveyance, because you don't convey lots by a plan, you convey it by a deed or an instrument.
Absolutely.
So what will happen to the actual ownership of the lots? They combine into a third entity, or one conveyance goes to another?
There's going to be, there's going to have to be a new title done, which is, which is being done, in the process of being done.
I see no reason why the board can't sign it as an A and R, especially with the condition that's in your block. You're not making any determination as to zoning. It may in fact just be a special permit situation with the Board of Appeals, but that's up to them.
Do we have to give him a variance to 150, though, that he's asking for? No, okay.
No, because really what you're doing is you're adding, say, Land Court 2135 is being added to Land Court 2136. being added to Land Court 2136.
Okay.
So, under Chapter 41 and the definition of a subdivision, it says adding or taking away from a lot so as not to affect the frontage is not considered a subdivision. So, that's what you're.
Really looking at.
You're looking at here. You're actually adding to the size of Lot 2136.
There's no other comments? I'd accept a motion to accept this A and R.
I'd make a motion to accept the A and R.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck, too.
Plus, it's Land Court land, if we did something wrong.
We need, you're going to want that signed, so we need to get somebody up there with a pen and also sign the four.
Bring it back to us.
You've got the rest of the plans.
Do we have any more plans?
Should be up here.
Please move on.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Should be some more full-size plans in here.
How many do you have to sign?
Pick one, just one. One authorized person.
Now, of course, you have another $50 when you go file it, though.
Absolutely.
For her name.
It's terrible.
It's good.
Yeah. All these things with an addition on it, you know.
Yet, there wouldn't be any room. There's not enough room to build an addition if he didn't something.
Yeah, the way they split like that.
So, that's yours. Do they take out paper ones?
You got to sign the paperwork, so.
Tom, how many do I give back?
Just the miler.
Okay. So, these are all for you?
Not all for me, but all for the town.
I went by there, saw the little road finally, and I was like, oh, here it is.
All right. Good evening. Tom, thank you so much for all your help.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Mary, you got to sign a couple of forms here. I hate to put it out loud. Just regular pen, receive form N, and then that you approved it or signed it.
Applicant is Marcus Barrow. The location is 23 Pimlico Pond Road, Assessor's Map 3, Block 7. Signature of two lot subdivision, A and R. Hi.
And you told me it's, it's actually three lots, the, yeah, so.
Signature of three lot division A and R.
You've seen the thing before, but this is the same three lots, but rejiggered, so hopefully they got the frontage.
Oh, I think the same.
Get the application forms. Could I have the application materials, the application forms? Form A and, there's supposed to be three of them.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Rob Sykes. I represent Mr. Barrows. I'm really under the weather tonight, but you will remember last week, our last meeting, we were really unable to come to a conclusion. I did, we did quickly approve two of the lots and left one open because it did not have suitable frontage. Redrew the plan, redrew all three lots, and came to this conclusion of where we might have frontage on Wakeby Road. That little strip of frontage on, on the old road there, this, uh, Kettuit Sandwich Road, is within the way. And the Land Court has always believed that, by their definition of that way, that the land of the center line devolves of ours. So, the Land Court's on board with this. And I hope that we've met the furniture requirements and we can get these three lots approved.
So, you're talking about Lot 13, 14, and 15?
Lot 14A being combined with 14.
I'm sorry.
It was high excitement.
So.
How, how can an A and R be exciting? Wait a minute.
Which, which lot are you looking at? Lot 15?
Pardon me?
But you said you were going to not go on one lot, but lot when you're going to...
15.
You're going for all three lots?
All three lots.
All right.
13, 14, and 15. And so, why don't you go through, what are the, what are the frontages for 13, 14, and 15?
15.
I can see.
253.
Oh, here it is, is that line.
253.
Lot 13 has a frontage of 150.08 feet on the arc. At these front setback line, the distance of that lot is.
You can grab the mic, isn't it?
Yeah, what is it on a straight line between the intersection of the sidelines and the street line? That's the key number for the frontage.
That distance is 150 feet point oh four, point zero four.
Okay, so you made 150 on a straight line, too.
State that it needs to be shown on the plan at the front setback.
That has to do with when you're on a curve. That has to do when you're on a curve of greater than 300 feet or less than 300-foot radius. This is not. So, you've made it fortunately, but that 40-foot line was unnecessary.
I made sure that that straight line distance is over greater than 150 feet. Tom, rest assured.
I wish it was shown on the plan, though, the straight line distance, because it's, would help anybody interpreting.
What's the line you're trying to call 14?
Going to Land Court. And you know they're going to, they're going to go out and measure it.
No, I can't. I don't think the building inspector can either, you know.
Right, you've got the straight line here, though, right?
Yeah.
All right, so Lot 14, what's going on with Lot 14?
If you look at the detail on the side there, you see the applicable frontage is 170.11 feet. And that, that is Lot 14A, you see in the detail, and it is all the land, it's all land within the line. But the owners, the butter owns the center line, according to the Land Court.
And?
And Pimlico Pond, this one that says 23 Pimlico Pond Road, Lot 15, it has this front, two different pieces of frontage. One is 133.55, the other piece is 84.79 feet.
Why can't I see that on the plan?
Yeah, but you get that 89.
It's 84.79.
Oh, you're doing it on.
Oh, this lot, oh, okay.
We're down here on, it fronts on Pimlico Pond Road.
I was looking at the ancient way.
So, what's Lot 15 front on? Kettuit Sandwich Road?
No, Lot 15 fronts on Pimlico Pond Road.
Down below.
Yeah, but what's this line here? That's a different lot, though.
That's called a tie line, and it just is a.
Oh, okay, I didn't read it, all right. I got you.
So, he's got it here.
Yep.
I always think I need a colorized version.
Well, this one looks like... That's right, yeah, then it'd be that way.
So, we have one comment already you're going to change, which is that Lot 3, the frontage, you're going to change that to 150.04.
Well, no, I mean, he's showing the length of that line, but it's on a radius. So, maybe it's just a note on the lot that the, the straight line frontage is 150. So, when you go to the building inspector, it's right there, you know, or anybody.
Okay.
Because he's not going to be able to calculate that, you know, with the radius and all that stuff and.
Yeah, yeah.
Going to be this.
So, what they're saying, he goes to the center line here now. You know, because this used to, this used to be that street. This street used to, and they changed it. Yeah. And there we got his front.
I have no more comments.
Sounds good.
Joe? Tom?
Yeah, I got a comment. There's no note that Lot 14A is to be merged with Lot 14 to create one lot. Right now, they're showing up as two separate lots on the plan. I would have expected to see a note that that is to become part of Lot 14.
Makes it clearer? Because you're already going to make a note anyways, right?
It's fine with me. Because that's one of those things, there will not be a deed for that.
Right, but there's a plan and a Land Court lot number and all that stuff, so, yeah.
So, he has to put them.
That's interesting, so you have to show it as a separate lot to satisfy Land Court, yet there's not going to be any separate deed for it to, to merge the deeds, but, I don't know, there should be some kind of clarity that it's part of Lot 14 or to become part of Lot 14. Again, so, next person down the line issuing a building permit is.
That clear title, and then that clear title is, is recognized when it sells. Because you don't want to deal with this when, a week before closing, with somebody else, it's a nightmare.
Yeah, it's mainly when you go for the building permit, you got to make sure that's the case, so.
So, you find this a creative plan? He's got that look.
I know that something like this was coming, so it's not a complete surprise. But I'm wondering, Rob, how is the Land Court going to draw the final decree plan? Are they going to show it as a part of Lot 14 or are they going to maintain it as Lot 14A, do you know? The final plan that goes to the registry of deeds is going to be the smaller plan, right? Are they going to show it as one piece?
On the decree plan?
Yeah.
I don't know, Charlie.
Sure would be cleaner if it was.
Well.
I guess the question determines or depends on what they establish for, you mentioned that they may or may not adjudicate the strip between the hard boundary and the center of the road?
They will if they're asked. What they, and what they would require is the town abandon the road, discontinue and abandon the road.
Well, as we discovered, the town never laid out the road. There was never any, any indication of a layout to begin with, you know.
There are ancient ways all over the place. It's commonly accepted that the butter is owned to the center line.
Right, and the town doesn't have to do anything with those.
In any of those cases.
Of course, it depends on the language of the deed, but in any case, whether it's the center line or the sideline, because we have both in Mashpee, but in this case, there's Remember, we went, we went through the whole thing. Sandwich had a layout, but Mashpee didn't, because it was before there was even a town in Mashpee.
I guess to put the note on the plan the way that Thomas suggested it is about the only thing we could do at this point. It could become a cumbersome and complicated issue with the Land Court to do anything other than to show it this way, I guess. I don't, I don't know of any other way to show it. It would be nice if it simply combined it and made it one piece with the frontage totally on Kettuit Road, then there would be no question. With perhaps a dotted line between the, the little short line and the, and the line that goes out to the county bound or the concrete bound that's there. But if it's going to be required by the Land Court and if they show it as a separate lot like this, at least, at least it's a part of the record here that the understanding is that it's to be used as frontage in part of Lot 14. So, combining the two together and making it essentially one lot would be the preferable I just don't know how you would do that with the Land Court.
We're going to, we'll find out.
We're charting, charting new ground that you may not have to cover again.
Well, you know, we, we may have to do that here to satisfy the, the frontage requirement to do this as an A and R. I mean, that, that statement has to be on the plan, otherwise that Lot 14 doesn't have the frontage if there's a separate lot in front of it there.
I think we, we're going to get that.
So, there's got to be some kind of.
We're going to get.
Merge your language.
Right, merge.
Right.
Lot 14 and Lot 14A, we're getting that note on the plan, right?
Would there be any issue in your mind, Rob, about making this portion of, of the line from, from here to here as a dash line?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
And just showing it as, as a total area?
Specifically requested by Tom Gavigan to take that dash line off, because that was my first rendition.
Really?
Yeah. He wants to maintain that portion of the property that was adjudicated by the court, which was this line.
That's right.
And then by putting those words, by out here in parentheses means that the ownership goes to the center.
That's right.
But the clear title, as far as they're concerned, what's shown on the certificate only goes to this point. That's what he's saying.
So, the other guy swiped it.
Yeah.
That's the other guy's problem, huh?
With the notation on the plan, it was the intent of this plan that Lot 14A can be combined with 14. And if it becomes an issue with the Land Court, then somehow that's going to have to be dealt with. I don't know how else you'd do it.
Well, the Land Court's easy compared to you guys.
I'm going to call my cousin up.
We are citizen planners. Okay, so I think if those two things get on there, we'll be fine to go.
Well, the question is, do you want to vote on it tonight and have them come in with a modified plan and get one of you to come in and sign it or put it off for another?
Vote on it, so there.
I'd entertain a motion to accept this A and R with the two following comments added.
I'd make a motion to accept this A and R with the two following quotations added to the plan. One, what was it, combined Lot 14?
We're going to add, the intent of this plan is to merge Lot 14 and 14A.
A. And what was the other request?
The other one is to.
Notation relative to the straight line distance between the intersection of the sideline and the road layout. Somewhere a note on that Lot 15, is it, the top one?
No, 15. No, 13.
13.
13, okay, so that the building inspector knows that the number is there, 150.04.
04.
Well, I just said generally.
Makes sense to make that note, say.
You're brilliant.
Merge 14A and 14B.
So.
I can't make a second.
All in favor?
You want a second?
Joe wants to own that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and then Tom will call us when it's ready to be signed.
Well, I'll call one of you.
Call me.
Call Dennis, he's always around.
Thank you.
Good luck.
So, Mary, I'm going to ask you to sign off on these forms, but obviously I can't file them until the plan gets signed.
So, you come in two weeks with a new plan with the.
No, he's not coming in two weeks. He's coming in.
Tomorrow, 8 o'clock tomorrow.
Don't he got to put a note on it?
What's that?
He got to put a note on the plan.
There's, yes, yes, put the notes on the plan. These, these are not the plans that you'll, you'll sign.
So, you do that tonight and bring it back, and, okay.
Yeah, because I know that they want to move quickly on this, as quickly as they can.
I would also like to offer another request.
Yeah, he doesn't want to pass.
He's waived the $100 filing fee for above reference submission. The plan is a revision of a prior plan.
I would support that. I would support that.
Second, I support that.
That's the first. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, and I don't know what the new plan is gonna do on things like that, so, you know.
Especially without Charlie.
That's a whole nother conversation we have.
You going to...
I was gonna bring up Charlie, I said, no, they don't have no money.
That's enough for tonight.
I filled out a form.
Well, deal with that. We're just gonna clone them.
And the decision.
Take their DNA.
But this is the one I like people to pull in, with all the information.
I ran next year.
So anyway...
I'm not projecting this year.
I know, no, 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 no.
Twenty-five years, that's like...
Twenty-five years, oh my goodness.
Did you agree?
Yeah.
Oh, I tried to get us paid, you know?
They're gonna kill us, David. They're gonna kill us. All right.
Are there any copies of the paper plan that was still floating around out there? Have you got all the paper plans?
I have a...
Bob?
May I? We have it for the record.
I made my notes on it.
Okay, well, yeah, keep that. I was just talking about the full-size plans. Just want, don't want to get anything confused.
I have your two notes and...
Oh, no, we're not gonna take it from you.
Don't want it, no. I want you to take away all the full-size plans, so nobody gets confused.
Oh, I see, okay.
Matter of fact, wait a second, take this away from me. I don't want this. This will leave us confused.
Now, the note as said, didn't make reference to why they were combining the lots. I thought maybe you wanted to add, you know, combining 14 and 14A for the purpose of...
I don't think you need to do that. Just combine, no, just that they're being combined.
Just confusing.
Somebody downstream like, why did they do that?
Well...
Ron, Ron.
Once they're combined, they get the building permit, they get, you know, the deed can be done.
It's gonna go to the land court.
Uncomplicated.
Sort of the same as the last one. We don't know the reason theoretically that they've been combined.
They could have been combined by deed, for crying out loud, the last one.
Okay.
In a single description.
Status of BCDM Aquay Highlands, so I read the minutes, and it looks like the affordable lot's not gonna go through, right?
No. No, the affordable lot has already been transferred. That was why I left it on, because the affordable lot has been transferred as of April 27th to Habitat for Humanity.
Was there no title issue?
There was no title issue, no. The issue that was, was that there was a purchase and sale agreement, and a condition of that purchase and sale agreement was that they get their share of the open space to count towards the aggregation agreement they're going to need for the three bedrooms. And so that part is part of the PNS that survived the sale or the transfer of the deed. So there's the deed, and there's that piece of the PNS that survived that will make sure that, number one, Habitat already has the deed, and number two, that they will get their share of the open space to qualify for the three bedrooms and the aggregation, which is exactly what the special permit required.
It says Habitat lawyers had expressed concern regarding liability as...
What are you reading now?
The last meeting.
Oh, well, that's last meeting, yeah, that's...
Okay, so there's an update.
Done.
I'm sorry, so give us an update.
Yeah, it's done. The Habitat has accepted the deed as of April 27th.
I have a question. When we did this, weren't they supposed to buy us a traffic? You know, when the speed thing, that was part of that?
Well, there's no deadline on that. There's just a condition. You'd have to go back and look to see whether there's some enforcement mechanism in there relative to occupancy permits or whatever on any of those, because there's the shellfish contribution, there's the stop signs, there's a couple of things.
So if he sold his property...
The next person's gonna be liable for those things.
Okay, so that, all right.
Not to mention there's a lien on the property for the engineer's fees. But I had heard that there's a PNS on the property.
That's what I heard till that day.
I heard of three different people trying to buy it too, so I'm not sure who's doing it.
That's good news.
But the bottom line is, they met the three-year requirement, which technically wasn't an absolute requirement, but it was an incentive, I guess, and the Habitat has the affordable housing law.
That's good.
Good news. Okay. Special permit. Applicant is Mashpee Commons LP.
Hey, you're early. All right, got here before eight.
North of 34 Bates Road, assessors map 74 block 22. Request application for special permit modification for site plan change to North Market Street project to add two carport structures with solar panels above 80 parking spaces in existing parking lot. Need board vote whether or not a public hearing will be required. If hearing required, we need to schedule a hearing.
Right, so this has been formally filed as a special permit modification with Town Clerk's office, so it's... The clock is running. But as in previous cases of minor changes, there is no text change required in the special permit decision, so that this is a site plan change. And if the board votes that you don't believe that it requires a public hearing because you don't believe it'll have any significant impact on abutting properties, you can do this modification without an advertised public hearing process. I would recommend.
Very much on the edge on that, so I wanted to ask the party proponent a few questions before I...
Okay.
Okay, so this is just about whether we need to have a publicly advertised hearing with abutter notices. So, just on your page PV 10. Who are your abutters? Who would be able to see these?
Nobody, actually.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Franti. I'm here on behalf of Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership. Before I start, I would like to thank you all for the flexibility tonight of allowing me to sort of move around. This allowed me to see my daughter's concert, my son's baseball, part of my son's baseball game and part of my daughter's softball game. So it was a lot of driving, but it was worth it, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so town manager took his spot anyways, so...
Yeah, I'm sure he wasn't upset by that.
No, we want him to say thank you to us.
This project is located in the northern portion of the parking lot. It's the parking lot which is behind the building that houses the UPS store, the hair salon, the dialysis clinic, and Zoe's Pizza. The abutter to this project is Sandpiper Village condominiums. Before we started the process, even on an informal basis with the town, before we even applied for our informal hearing with design review and plan review, I actually went and met with a few members of the board's homeowners association to walk them through what we were planning. We sat down, I sent them photos, I provided them with plans so that they could then take that and discuss that with any homeowners that may possibly be affected. There are two units in Sandpiper Village that have second-floor units that look in the direction of North Market Street. However, based on the height of the trees, we don't believe that they will actually see these carport structures. They don't actually see Building 34, which is what we refer to the building with the dialysis clinic. The height of the trees is anywhere from 35 to 45 feet. The maximum height of this carport structure will be 18 feet 2 inches.
All right, so...
And so the homeowners association, and again, it was just, it was a meeting with a handful of their members. It was not with the entire residence residency, but they did take this information back to their residents and shared it with them. I believe they were putting it in their newsletter so that everyone was aware of what we were doing. And during our meeting, they did not have any concerns, and there haven't been any subsequent concerns to that.
So I don't have any other questions to this portion of our discussion.
I make a motion, we say this don't need a public hearing.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I make one suggestion?
Could Rob vote on this one?
It's a special permit issue, so yes, he could. If, in other words...
Madam Chair appoints Rob as a member to...
Okay, okay. You could, or you could just not bother and see if Dave's here next time. Because you're not actually adjudicating it tonight, you're just deciding whether or not it needed a public hearing, so...
This is just establishing the process.
I don't think you need to appoint Rob to sit on it unless next time somebody's missing. And I assume we'll put this on the next agenda, the June 7th, I think it is, agenda.
Okay, I think I'm around.
Now, I was gonna make a suggestion, though, in terms of the plans.
Yes.
And it goes directly to this issue about the abutters there, is that there really should be a site plan that shows the property lines and the vegetation between the two, because all of these are just floating in space and don't really reference any kind of property line or distance to the structures at Sandpiper. And I think that would be appropriate.
The other thing I would like to see, Tom, Braddall did forward to me some visuals of these structures.
Yeah, this whole package was forwarded to everybody.
No, not this.
Was there anything else?
Like photo of what these things look like from, if you're a pedestrian, like...
Did you send those?
No.
I don't...
Maybe I Googled...
I have anything like that, I'm not sure.
Perhaps, I mean, basically, all that I've, all that we've submitted so far is this set of plans that you've seen. This is the same set of plans that I shared with the homeowners association. This is the, I don't know how much you want to get into the discussion tonight, but this is an inverted V design. So if you are going to Google image of what it will look like, just make sure you're looking at something that's applicable to what we're doing.
And what's the company name?
Sunbug is the solar consultant that we were working with, and Sun Power will be the company that will supply the structures.
And you said it was a V?
It's an inverted V design.
You've got a drawing that Charlie's looking at right here, Mary, of sort of the side view.
My question was like snow loads, why an inverted V, other than protecting people from...
The inverted V actually helps with the solar collection, so you actually have the one that gets the southern exposure at a higher angle, and it allows it to attract more sun. And the second reason is partially what you're discussing, which is the snow load. At the inverted V, you direct all the storm water to a centralized gutter system that then goes vertically into the ground where it continues and collects into the existing structure, infrastructure.
You know, here, we get ice storms and snow, first you get snow and then ice. So does that work when there's snow on it, if it's not melting?
These pilings will be about 20 feet into the ground, so the structure has been accounted for it. I'm not sure whether or not you all know this, but we actually put solar onto nine of our buildings last year. So it's very, it's engineered to within, you know, an inch of its life to make sure that it can account for all the snow loads.
No, I'm not saying that it counts as snow load. Does it work when there's snow on it?
Um, no.
I mean, we have a lot of snow, so...
No, it doesn't, but the way that the panels work, it actually, the snow will melt faster.
Okay, to the sun?
Right, right.
Right. I mean, we get two feet of snow and then ice, and it could be two months before you get...
Yeah, when they figure out all the proformas for the solar system and what your payback period is, they actually account for the total number of days or the average number of days that you will get sun. And the interesting thing about what we've done with Sunbug, the way that this is established is we get a computer program, and I can log on at any time of any day and see how much power is being generated by our solar system. And I went through that exercise during some of our snowstorms in the winter, and it's not very good. But in May, June, July, August, September, not this May, but in summer months, it actually was right on target with what their projections were.
So that'd be good for all the air conditioning and all that stuff, right?
Well, this, so the way that this system works with its Form Z, which is all net metering, and so what we do is we collect all of the power generation, and then we allocate it to certain meters. And for example, we allocate it to our wastewater treatment facility, we allocate it to parking lot lights, sidewalk lights, a lot of the common area power that we are, that we're paying for and that, you know, that the merchant's paying for. That's what's, it doesn't go to a specific tenant.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
So just in your package for our next meeting, if you could give me some type of visualization from kind of like this point of view, so people are gonna be driving down here, and quite a few people go that way, because if you're coming from this part of town, you're not gonna go out to the Rotary, right, so you could take this entrance. Just that kind of visualization as those cars go around, what are they gonna see?
Sure. Yeah, we can have some renderings put together.
I want them to go, ah!
And we don't want them to do that either.
All right, so we'll see you in June.
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Is it two weeks?
Uh, is it three weeks?
Whenever, June 7th is. Just, you have a second item relative to this in your packets from Jack Phelan, the deputy fire chief. Just with his statement, they reviewed the submitted plans and the listed height clearances. Further, I confirm the maximum height requirements for our apparatus, meaning the tower truck, 11 feet 9 inches. I am satisfied that all requirements of the fire department have been met, including turn radius requirements.
And also, just so you all...
Are you gonna bring this to the next meeting too?
Well, you all have it right now, but I'll bring it in the folder if you want. You can save that one, too.
Yeah, I'm gonna pass mine into Tom.
Really? You don't want it? Oh, okay.
We will have our...
Put it back in your folder then.
We will have our formal meeting with design review and plan review. It's currently, it's scheduled for the day before, the Tuesday before that planning board hearing. So we'll make sure that, you know, there are no other issues or questions or concerns that anyone on either of those committees have. And also, we have already started our process with the Cape Cod Commission. It's been submitted to the commission, and it looks like they are going to treat this as a type 1 minor modification, which is...
Yeah, it should be.
It's a simple text change for them as well, so...
Can you make a... Are you familiar with these building we have?
You guys want to come in?
In Sandwich? Yes.
They've installed solar panels. Can you, relative to that operation, is it bigger, smaller?
I don't know the specifics of that. I'd have to find out. I'm not sure who installed that, but we can look into that.
When I drove up the first time, I looked at it, said, wow, what are they doing here? It looked like it was way higher. Yours looks more in proportion with what I would expect. Theirs looks like, why are they sticking so high?
It could be the tree line, you know?
No, no, there's no trees near the scene.
That's why, you know, to get the sun.
Yeah, to get the sun in it, but it looked like way overkill versus what you're doing.
I'll take a look. It could be a proportion thing, but I'll see what I can find out about that one. Okay, thank you all very much. Have a wonderful night. I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Hey, don't forget that extra plan and illustration. Get that to me at some point.
Yes.
Hopefully electronically, and I can just forward it to the board members right away.
Thank you all very much.
I'll see you later.
Bye. All right, new business, signature of Emma Oakley Mills Way Town Road Taking Claim.
Okay, this is the one where we went through three iterations, and I double-checked, and this is the correct one, the one that you voted to approve. Correct the mentioning of the drainage areas and all. It is on our ten hills, so you might want...
Was I at that meeting?
Were you at that meeting?
When we accepted this?
Well, I mean, I don't think it matters.
No, yeah.
The planning board voted to make a recommendation at the meeting.
Yeah.
They voted to approve, so...
Do we all have to sign?
Well, you're four regular members, it's important.
Last one to sign is a rotten head.
Okay.
We make way against that. That was the funniest thing.
They don't give us a copy anymore. I've got no way to make a copy now that my dialysis machine is long gone.
Oh, yeah? Oh, I mean, it doesn't work, or they took it away?
It was taken away, yeah.
So you had no way of making it?
I had no place to put it.
No one thing?
When they...
Castor's Valley down her shop?
No, nobody uses dialysis anymore. I know, I had somebody that was shocked that I was even talking about it, you know? Yeah, oh, that ammonia smells and all, I thought, yeah, that's what a plumbing up smells like.
Up here, center.
I lost that when I moved to the basement, when I was moved to the basement.
So, Mr. Town Planner, you proposed zoning article drive-through facilities in C2?
Yes.
What's that all about?
What that's all about is basically, it just, we have, drive-through banks are allowed in both the C1 and C2 districts. As far as eating facilities, though, they're only allowed in the C1 zone, which is basically Mashpee Commons and Rotary area. Meanwhile, we've got three illegal ones out in the C2 zones. This is intended to actually put them where they make more sense, because that's where you see these things, is out in in your strip areas, basically. You know, like 151 particularly, and...
And the one right here, 130.
And it wouldn't be, and this one wouldn't be allowed because the intent, and I don't know if I actually drafted up the article or not, but the intent would be to accept in the Mashpee Center overlay district. And it wouldn't be for C3 either, unless you thought it should be. C3 is basically the strip along Route 130, as opposed to C2, which is the Andy's Market area on 151 and downward the Route 28 where the Honeydew is. the Route 28 where the Honeydew is.
So.
And, and it, and it, and one of the reasons, actually, there was one, one particular proposal that put it in my head as to why does this make any sense that we don't allow them out there, and it was for the former Cherrystones Restaurant site that has been sitting there empty for years and years. And there was a proposal that came in to do a drive-through restaurant, I had to tell them, sorry, they're not allowed. Why aren't they allowed out there? Well, I mean, I don't know. It's been like that since before I got here, so I don't, I don't know why they did that.
What I'd love to do is have maybe a meeting with the chamber about that. I just, so some restaurants, some developers or some property owners are going to be psyched by this. Some people are not, because they are, because that's strong competition against an existing little convenience store that has homemade sandwiches. So I just want to touch base, this could have profound effects on that part of 151, and I wouldn't want to cause business to go out of business, and I'd like to proactively ask the chamber what they, what their thoughts were on.
But if it was allowed, then that business could put a drive-through through now, you know, so I don't know, I don't understand. And you should always see what business is up there, you know, and you already have a drive-through up there, so they could be all saying, how this, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts have the drive-through, and I don't have one, I mean.
You don't have a restaurant association in Mashpee?
I never heard of one.
Well.
I mean, I like it, I, I think it's a good idea, that's just my opinion, though.
We usually follow your lead, Dennis, but, um, so when did you, when did you want to start working on this?
No, I mean, I, I want to put it in for the October time meeting, it's just that I have been working on a massive rezoning for the Mashpee Commons area, basically, that.
So I'll, I'll get the chamber. I just don't want to have, I just want to.
It'd be good to get their input.
Get their input, proactively, make sure. It sounds to me like the business community would be all for it, but I just want to double-check.
The, one thing I should correct is there is one spot on Route 130 that is a C2 zone outside of the Mashpee Center area here, and that's Mr. Tees. That is a sort of a floating C2 zone right there.
Yeah, that might add a lot of value to that property.
Is it still in business?
It's in the historic district, though, as well, so I mean, you know, there's.
Yeah.
There's constraints on it as well.
Isn't that a mom and pop?
Yeah, they've been there for a long time.
Yeah, so I just, I have a feeling that if that got redeveloped, it'd be by a different.
We're, we're dealing with that in William a little bit, and one of the biggest concerns is queuing.
Queuing.
And sufficient standing or staging, if you will, around the building while you're waiting for an order.
That's the problem with this Dunkin' Donuts every morning.
Oh, yeah, that day was, it's too small, 130, what are they doing?
So you need adequate size on the lot to get the queuing in, getting people in and out without having an issue like you do over here.
Good point, all right.
This one was permitted illegally, you know, by the ZBA, surprise, surprise, back in the 90s, and it was actually the reason that we started the development of a historic district proposal, because it was just so jarring to have that in our historic center of the town, so. That's, that's the one good thing came of it, we got a historic district now.
And it is a smaller one, it is. Anyways, what's the next one, the four-story, 50-foot hotel height limit?
Right. There is an actual person, after all these years of the town trying to land a hotel, that wants to do an extended stay hotel, that would be four stories and 50 feet. And they're looking at three potential locations, the town manager is very excited about this. You know, the town's been trying to land something like this for years. And so I think it is only fair to put it on in town meeting warrant and see if it flies, because this could be a boon to the town in terms of the tax base, and we get some, obviously, the rooms tax revenue as well.
Do you have an idea which section of town?
Well, the, the three sites that are being talked about are the, the long vacant sand pit next to the Rockland Trust Bank, because they only need two acres for the building. Also have been put in touch with Mashpee Commons through the town manager, and also looking at potentially the town's piece on Commercial Street across from the Community Health Center, which was actually, at one time, town meeting voted to lease that for a hotel operation. Remember the Dick and Ellie Grace Hotel, it didn't happen, yeah.
So, I hesitate with a four-story building unless there was architectural and site design standards.
Well, you, you have to, it'd be by special permits, so you have to, you have to like it.
No, I know, but I'm not an architect.
But hotels are going to come in here unless they get that, though, for the, the rooms.
Nope. But I don't know, do we have architectural and site design standards for something like this?
No, we don't have, you don't normally have standards like that in your zoning bylaw, those that go beyond the powers of zoning in terms of a set of standards that you write into zoning, but you do have a lot of discretion in your special permit authority.
But, no, there are, there are bylaws that have been passed by the AG that reference things have to, have to.
They're pretty, they're pretty general, though.
Well, there's the, there's the Cape Cod Commission one.
Well, they'll have, they'll, this will go through the Cape Cod Commission, given the size, I mean, it's about 48,000 square feet of floor area.
Right, but Yarmouth adopted those in their motel bylaw. They gave, motels can be three stories? I, I think it's 45 feet, something comparable, but they have to meet certain architectural and, and site design standards. And that was key to getting it through town meeting. It, it was key, it was going to be dead in the water without them. And there's certain setbacks from the front, so you couldn't have that, you couldn't have the 45 feet or the 50 feet right in the front, it had to build up to that, it to soften it.
The only thing is, well, I forget that, Yarmouth has a bunch of hotels, Mashpee has no hotels. We've been for years trying to get hotels so we can get maybe some conventions coming here, or, and, and it would help all the, a lot of businesses at the time were fine, because the restaurants were due with that. I mean, you can't compare Yarmouth to Mash, Mashpee has no hotel, well.
No, 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 but it's not.
No, that's an apartment complex, really, there's no hotel, well, Santu did.
I find that there was a hotel proposal in Hyannis that people voted down because of the story, so I just.
Well, it was at the end of a runway at the airport, too, and it was Stu Bornstein.
Stu, that's, that's the man there, was Stu.
But guess who develops hotels, Stu Bornstein.
Well, this is not Stu Bornstein.
But, but you're opening it up to other developers.
Well, we've been trying to get one of these for decades.
That's fine, but I want it to look nice, I want it to have.
Of course it's going to look nice, I mean.
No, I'm not going to leave it up to the developer, because some of the.
Oh, it'll be in your hands, it's going to be up to you, the planning board.
It's up to us, we look at the plan.
That's what I'm going to be looking for in the bylaw, a reference to architectural.
We don't have any, so we can't reference that in the bylaw.
Well, we're going to have to develop them.
I don't think, I think, why, why are you trying to put a stopper on this?
I'm not.
A developer can see that you are.
I'm trying to get it through town meeting.
It'll get through town meeting, I guarantee you.
If I saw that, four stories, I wouldn't vote for it.
Well, that's you, a lot of other people in town would vote for this without beating that in the eye.
Well, it's going to be different if I get up and say it doesn't have architectural and site design standards with it.
And you don't think I'll get up?
No project that has ever come to the planning board, whether it's Southgate Village or anything else, has had any design standards associated with it.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
I want it to look good.
You have a design review, Joe's on it.
I'm not on it, I'm not on it.
But you, you don't have your say at the planning board?
That's my say, I'm not going to, I'm not.
All right, what do you say, you want to put another bylaw in?
Wouldn't it be the same?
This is a bylaw, this is a proposed bylaw that would have to reference some architectural and design.
Well, they already do that.
No, it doesn't, it's not under our control. If you adopt the ones from the Cape Cod Commission, that puts it under our control. I can get them for you, they're not, they're not hard to.
Are you going to adopt that for every last project that comes through town, or are you just going to specifically target a hotel?
Hotels.
And not all the other facilities that come under that same section of the zoning bylaw, like the assisted living facilities and everything else? Why is four stories?
It's a sensitive issue.
Need more architectural controls than a three-story building that's already permitted or two-story?
It's a sensitive issue here on the Cape, I hear it all the time.
We're not a city, we're a village or.
50 feet is a, a, a big ask from the residents.
Well, look at hotel, the first floor would be where you go in, and they have the function room. And then they'll only have three more, you know, floors of beds, and it's not going to be that big, you know? What it was before, they needed so many rooms to, to be viable.
Yeah, it's got to be economically viable or it can't happen.
Because now you put another restriction, somebody's going to see this and say, I'll go another town. You know, we already have a design review, and we look at the plan, if we don't like it, we can say.
I'm sorry, but I will, I will.
All right, so let's vote, okay.
I, I don't agree with it, I think the developer will say, oh, yeah, that's easy. They want to know what you want, and they want to know, they want it to be predictable. And they don't want to do all this architectural and site design standards before.
They have to go through Cape Cod Commission, don't they?
Those rules already apply, because they're going through the commission.
So if we adopt the same.
We don't need to adopt them.
If they got to go through Cape Cod Commission, aren't they going through the same?
I have had stuff that they will not review as strictly as local control, and I do believe.
We still have review of it, you know, I don't.
Why wouldn't it be similar to what was done at Mashpee Commons, where you had a series of design criteria that could be applied? Couldn't, couldn't the same sort of thing be applied there? It didn't go through a bylaw or anything?
No.
No bylaw.
That's Mashpee Commons' own code.
They have their own architectural standards.
If Mary can get the Cape Cod Commission's information, could we look at it and read it at a meeting, and then decide then? Do we like it or we don't like it?
I second that.
That sounds good.
That's fine.
Okay, can you get that, Mary?
Yes, I can. Good suggestion, Joe. All right.
But you got to, you got, you got to, you got to decide whether you're going to apply those to everything else, as the commission does. They don't just pick out, you know, four-story hotels for that set of rules, everything has to.
If you're going to have a motel bylaw, it can be part of that motel bylaw.
Well, this isn't a motel bylaw, it's just a footnote in the table of dimensional requirements.
The AG will, I think the AG will allow it. For, for specific use.
Let's also add a thing, and then we'll decide from there.
Okay, um, road takings, proposed selectmen's policy.
Yeah, I gave you what I had in the files for where we were at. Haven't looked at it in a while.
Can we table that till the next time? Is there any way you could send this to us in color?
I mean, in color.
Well.
This is all stuff that has gone around in the past, um, to everybody.
So when you, when this print is all gray, it's not redlined?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't got the ability to do color copies, but.
I'm just, I'm just asking you to. If you could print it, if you could print it as a PDF and send it to me, then I can see the redline. Do you know what I mean? If you send it to me electronically, I should, not a scan of this, but of the original document, either as PDF or as Word, I'll be able to see the redlines.
I can find it, okay.
You want mine?
No, I mean, that's not redlined, so. I know I have one print that's in color, but I don't know if I have an original. So I don't know if we originate or got it through email or somebody handed it to us, so I can't confirm or deny.
Um, we have, it looks like you have some reminders in here. The RV one, the RV bylaw.
Still sitting there from the building commissioner.
Were you going to research weights of RVs? Joe, you let me down.
Okay, I let you down too, I forgot, I didn't get a chance to call Dick Terry. He was on the committee that created the bylaw in the first place, so.
Hi, here you go, here's my little note. Oop, that's a smile.
Mommy's just so smiling.
I've just been up to, to, to long today, all right. There's, there's a lot in here, Tom.
A lot of what?
What, this one is something about car washing, car wash?
Yeah, that one you guys approved previously, you're looking at stuff from a previous meeting now, I think. Because you missed a meeting, or two, you missed two meetings, actually.
I missed two, so I'm looking at stuff, all right.
I think the board already voted to support that one. I'll have to check the minutes.
So the car wash one is going to be on October?
Yeah, I mean, all of this stuff is my one last pile of zoning bylaw. Before I go out the door.
This is in my old packet, you guys already voted on it.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I don't want to talk, okay.
It's my memory, but again, I'll check the minutes to make sure my memory is not as bad as it really, as I believe it is, so.
Well, now I've completely messed up my packet.
All those ordered, all in order when I gave it to you.
No, I know, but I've mixed up different things. So vice chairman, what's on the, on the agenda?
Our old business. Plan review, road takings, so we do, yeah. Building commissioner proposed amendment to zoning section.
Okay, so I have to follow up on that.
Was there any action taken or desire to be taken on the drive-through? Oh, no, you were going to talk to the chamber, that's right, so that's on hold. Never mind.
So, yeah, the, the proposed change to 174-25A9, that I'm still looking for backup information, background information from.
Yeah, I could find nothing in minutes or anything of the planning board when, when it was adopted and reviewed and all that stuff. Nothing at all said, that's why I was going to try to test the brain of Dick Terry, who was, I believe, a selectman at the time, or maybe the chairman of the planning board at the time, but I'm sure would remember, because there was a growth study committee that was going on just before I got here, that I'm sure he was involved with somehow. And it was, the article was submitted jointly by the planning board and the growth study committee.
Okay, so report on status of the Greenway project, there was a site visit?
There was a site visit, I forget what the date was, Charlie wrote up a nice little.
April 20.
April 20.
Did I put Charlie's?
The minutes of the meeting.
I didn't, but I think I printed them out. Where did I put them?
So basically.
We decided on a site.
Decided on a site.
And, um, so the engineer is looking, is working on that.
Working on that.
And in the direction of DPW, oh, good. That's great.
Were you busy this week?
All right, good. Jen, did you get a copy of that?
Hey, Charlie just wrote it out.
Can you send it to everybody?
I think you're getting them right now.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I had, I did print them out, but I left them in the copy machine.
Oh, okay, that's great.
So this may, since you had a quorum, I think you may want to, you have to off the nose, this minutes.
Oh, you had a quorum, so.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd accept a motion to accept the minutes of town and Mashpee Planning Board, April 20, 2017, site visit to the Quashnet River to locate the proposed Quashnet Footbridge.
You might want to, before you do that, take a vote to put that item on the agenda.
Would accept a motion to put that item on the agenda.
Make a motion to put that item on the agenda?
Second.
On favor?
It's a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, I'd accept a motion to, uh, accept the minutes of the site meeting for the Quashnet Bridge project on, it was a site visit on April 20, 2017.
I make a motion to accept the minutes for the bridge project of April 20, 2017.
Second.
Now, hate to bring this up, but the people present were Dave Gahery and Dave Whedon and Rob Hanson.
Oh.
Dave Whedon's not here, and that only leaves two of you to vote on this.
But that's not a quorum.
That a quorum or not?
So let's put that on the agenda for next time to approve.
Sorry.
Okay, that's all right, we were just.
Hey, wait a minute, Kath, wouldn't that be a quorum?
I posted this meeting.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that.
No, I didn't go, but I posted the meeting.
Dave Whedon isn't here to vote on the minutes, usually you want.
Usually you want to vote on the minutes, yeah.
It was. Debbie Demy asked us to, um, post this...
Right.
Publicly with a 48-hour notice, which she helped me do. I wrote it up, she posted it, and here are the minutes of the meeting. Jen wasn't, Jen wasn't there. Charlie typed up the minutes.
It's not up to Jen's standards, but I did the best I could.
Jen's over there, redlining.
Better than I could do, I think.
All right, so we'll put those on the next agenda to be approved. That's great, all right. Reports from members of design review.
Uh, design review? No, I thought we were going to do the other one first, but that, uh, we had Capewide Construction. Uh, they're going to build a, uh, I believe it's a six-stall business.
Well, it's initially not to be divided into six spaces, but it has the potential to be divided into six contractor base.
It seems like that's what it's...
That's what it's going to do.
Right, but you guys didn't have a quorum, so you didn't meet on it, right?
Uh, no.
Right.
So this was postponed till...
Yeah. Well, I'll just let you know, the planner review met on it, and, um, against my, I voted against it. It was approved with certain conditions, but it's another case of a project coming in with the parking in the front, where the zoning bylaw actually says the parking needs to be the side or the rear, you know? And then there's this out for public safety, environmental, you know, and aesthetic reasons. You know, the ZBA in this case could, could allow parking in the front, but I, for the life of me, can't imagine an aesthetic reason to put parking in the front. That's the reason for the parking in the side and the river in the first place, for the aesthetics. The lot, it basically is a long, narrow lot, and yet the building is putting crosswires on it, um, which doesn't make sense to me. And, um, um, the, they had gone through and run the tower truck template just on that design, you know, and claimed that, see, it's public safety, but they could, they could do a different design and have the same result, uh, possibly even a better result. But in any case, I was outvoted and, uh, um, the planner view made a recommendation in favor of it, but it's just, and it's in a hideous Morton building, another one of those tin shacks, you know?
Yeah.
On, on, uh, just industrial park, you know?
Well, we told him, even though, you know, we didn't have a quorum, but we told him that he was going to run into opposition with the parking in the front and...
Well, he did, but unfortunately, nobody else backed me up on that in the, uh, planner review committee, because they don't give a damn.
Yeah.
It's in my opinion.
And what, the other one was Echo Road, uh...
Echo Road was, apparently there were some violations of, uh, of some regulations and, um, Mike keeps bringing in these things that are not plan review items, puts them on the planner view agenda. It was just a, it was a violation issue of something or other. I can't remember now, but, uh, it was not a special permit application or anything like that.
We didn't have a quorum. We couldn't.
Yeah. I mean...
But that was that one. And what's the next?
Uh, community preservation?
Yeah, CPC.
We meet on June 1st. Community Preservation Committee. We meet on June 1st. That's my only update. Um, they've, uh, yeah, that's my only...
Well, you missed the environmental oversight. Okay, that's right.
That's next.
Yeah, I'm next.
Yeah.
Vice Chairman is now reading the agenda because I've lost it again. Go ahead.
Environmental Oversight Committee.
The what?
The environmental oversight.
Environmental Oversight. Yeah, we, uh, had a meeting on the 10th, and, uh, the, uh, nutrient law has gone to the Attorney General, you know, phosphorus nitrogen.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, we're waiting to hear from the Attorney General. The Estuary Restoration Jelphiris Propagation, uh, I guess the town has some funds left, left over from last year and put it with this year and continue off the shellfish. Planning for the sewers. And, uh, they're talking about cleaning up the, the Estuary recent. They're trying to work with Falmouth, Bonstable, and Sandwich, which doesn't really want to do a lot.
No, Sandwich is, uh, we are working and are very close to an intermunicipal agreement with Sandwich and Bonstable relative to cleaning up Papaneset Bay.
Yeah.
We haven't started one with, uh, Falmouth and Sandwich relative to Wacoit Bay, because there isn't a final, uh, uh, TMDL report on Wacoit Bay.
Well, the word I hear on Sandwich is trips and drabs.
No, they're, that's, no, they're actually, their lawyer, they have contributed, their lawyer, to write the intermunicipal agreement, and we've contributed our GHD wastewater consultant to do the technical work on it. We've had some very good meetings with, uh, Sandwich, particularly, they had, uh, a very, um, well-informed selectman Frank Panorphi. Unfortunately, his term has run out, but, uh, the town manager, Bud Dunham, has been very eager to work with us, and, uh, they actually have, uh, Copelman and Page are from the town council, the ones that are working for them and drafting that up.
So these are your notes from the Environmental Oversight Committee, so...
So who said that?
Maybe, yeah, maybe they...
Who are you quoting at the...
Maybe they need an update from you, Tom. They're obviously not getting the information, the most current information. Is that an email you could send to Joe?
Well, I don't know what information they do or don't have and why they're talking about it.
Well, about an update...
That there's somebody there that was supposedly informing them at the meeting?
Well, Mr. Gottlieb was there.
Oh, well, he should know. He's the one that's working with everybody on the, uh, Sandwich and Bonstable IMF for Papaneset Bay. Um, but, um, also, we're two years behind on funding our adopted plan. I also, I also met with the Cape Cod Commission's executive director and five members of his staff today, because, uh, there is a DRI hearing scheduled tomorrow, a further, uh, it's been continued for two years, uh, on our wastewater, uh, plan that was adopted back in 2015 and approved by the state and all. They're wanting to postpone it again, because they say they're going to get rid of the requirement to have a DRI approval for a wastewater plant. Um, and they're working on new regulations, and what they were talking about coming up with by the end of the summer is basically a 208 plan consistency review. In other words, is your plan consistent with their plan? Um, and the DRI would just disappear. So, um, that was interesting, because I was getting frustrated, and so was the rest of the sewer commission. It's kept getting continued by the town manager and Andy Gottlieb, and we're saying, "Why? You know, we want to be done with this project." So that's what was explained to me, and, um, it was explained that it'd be a lot more complicated to complete the DRI process than to go through the process they're contemplating with the 208 consistency review, so that sounded acceptable.
Mr. Gottlieb was saying that it would cost $5 million.
What would cost $5 million?
To, what they wanted to do was connect, like, we'll say, the Commons Plant down to...
I don't know where he's getting his numbers. Isn't, there's no such thing.
$5 million cost to pipe the wastewater, uh, from the Commons Plant down to, uh, New Seaberry for the golf course.
Well, he may or may not have plucked that out of the overall plan, but I mean, that's not even in phase one of the plan. Um, the phase one of the plan is designing and building a treatment plant next to the transfer station and the collection system going to Mashpee Commons, then to the Wampanoag Treatment Plant, and to the new proposed municipal treatment plant next to the transfer station. That project is about to be completed, and the next sewer commission meeting will be televised so that everybody can see that presentation, uh, which I'm also going to make at the Mashpee Men's Club on, uh, June 6th, if anybody wants to see it, 10, 10:00 in the morning. So there will be a PowerPoint presentation on, um, that, as well as there is one already on the, uh, the, the plan and how it was done that GHD put together for a conference that they attended, basically explaining how we developed our plan, so, uh, if anybody's interested, I can, once I get those, uh, both from GHD, so that I can bring them to the men's club, I can send them out to you guys if they're, if they're not too big for email, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put them up on Google Docs or Dropbox or something like that.
Yeah, I don't know anything about that stuff.
Well, the Lance Stewart's program, the, uh, Americor, they're the volunteers that they're going to erect a new guard rail to protect the herring ladder. I guess, what is it, Jones Johnspoon?
Oh, wow.
A guard rail? There's no cars out there.
Yeah, I guess an ATV is, was going into it, uh...
Really? I mean, there's giant concrete blocks surrounding the thing. An ATV gets through those.
Maybe drip tanks.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah.
I think what you're talking about is the ATV has been going through the river below that.
Yeah, well...
Which...
And that seems...
Well, it's the herring ladder they're talking about.
Yeah, but you can't drive on the herring ladder.
Don't ride your ATVs in the herring run. Thank you.
Well, Dennis knows. I mean, we've spent years working on the trails and signage out there, and everything we did got destroyed in Johnspoon Park, so we gave up years ago.
And the interactive trail mapping?
Mm-hmm.
It says Falmouth will not fund the Mashpee Wildlife Trail Maps.
So we had a, we, so the friends of the...
Or had something right.
You did, you did. Yeah, so anyways, um, as you know, the Mashpee, the federal, the Mashpee Federal Wildlife Refuge is part in Falmouth and part in Mashpee, so they need money for their trail guides. So they brought it to the Mashpee CPC, and we recommended it to Town Meeting. Town Meeting approved it, but part of it was that they intended to go for money, matching money, uh, from Falmouth that would pay for half, and then they wouldn't use all of the Mashpee money that we allocated. And unfortunately, uh, Falmouth, um, for this round of CPC money, they only wanted to, um, consider plans or proposals that were of urgent nature. So I had encouraged the Mashpee, uh, friends of the Mashpee Refuge to say, "Well, it is urgent, because Mashpee, you know, approved this piece on the condition that we apply to you." Falmouth did not bring that to Town Meeting.
Well, they, uh, they, they, they had this ridiculous deadline, but they also determined that it was not a project, neither of the projects qualified for CPA funds, as far as they were concerned, under the CPA regulations. That's the, so even if it had gone to the Falmouth CPA Committee, it would have said no.
Well...
There's a lot of things that Mashpee does that don't conform to the CPA intent and regulations, but...
Every town has to depend on their...
At least you got this done already, so we're all set.
Yeah, so each town has to depend on their own town council for that advice, and town council said, "Yes, we could, um, pay for that." Anyways, go ahead.
And the, the last item is the Diana Lund Memorial to Johnspaw. And they completed the wording.
Where is it going to be?
Well, it's, it's going to be at Johnspaw Park.
Yeah, I'm just asking where, because of the vandalism issue out there. You have to see a memorial to Diana.
I guess it's going to be a very large boulder that they're donating to whoever's going to chop it up. And they've completed the wording.
And put a plaque, like they'll install the plaque in it?
Yeah.
Except the plaques get knocked off and taken away.
Well, and...
I hope it's not a plaque.
The wording is that Diana Lund was Board Secretary and Administrative Assistant for the Mashpee Conservation Commission from 1984 to 2002. Diana's commitment, proficiency in multiple tasks, wide counsel, communication skills, good nature, grace under pressure, loyalty, unflagging honesty, and sense of humor constituted a unique blend of qualities which admirably, admirably served the citizens of the town and fostered the protection and the unique natural beauty of her beloved Mashpee. So that's what they...
Yeah, I'd like to point out she was also a very faithful, according secretary for the Mashpee Water District Commission for many years.
We could get it in quickly. We get, we put that as a PS.
No, not a minute.
A wonderful person.
So that was, uh...
Okay.
Thank you.
Historic district?
No meeting.
MMR, no news? Uh, Cape Cod Commission?
I do have something. David's not here, but the Cape Cod Commission is holding, uh, meetings on May 31st and June 1st.
That's in everybody's packets, yep.
On their Cape Housing Market Study. Um, the one in Mashpee is Thursday, June 1st, 2:00 here at Mashpee Town Hall.
That's very wrong.
I went to the one, the, the first round of meetings, um, on May 3rd or 4th. I think I was here on the 4th. It was excellent. They have, um, a stats person from, I want to see, is it Crane Associates? He was excellent. Um, and what they're showing, what that piece showed, that there is expected economic growth on the Cape. But our housing projections don't match it. So if we don't have the housing to house these workers, we're not going to have that economic growth. So that's the decision people have to make. It's going to affect the Cape Cod Commission's regional policy plan that's up for renewal or update. So, you know, if people really are serious about economic growth on Cape Cod, they need to get serious about the housing. And it's not just affordable housing or housing for low, moderate income, it's housing for these workers.
The, uh, I, I attended the one in Mashpee, and the thing that struck me was how small the numbers were. The amount of growth is very small, and the amount of housing needed was, increase is very small. I mean, it's like flat lines.
But it is a positive growth.
Yeah, it's slightly positive, but not the kind of growth we've seen in the past where, you know, we're growing like crazy.
Go down, and then they start to look like ghost towns. So the, the good news is, they think there's going to be a potential for jobs that are actually gonna, you know, have our population grow, um, but it isn't exponential. It's modest.
I heard the school population's starting to creep up higher now.
That would be nice.
Really?
Yeah, there's more, like, first graders, kindergarten, starting, then, you know...
Yeah, but the other, the other thing that's coming, though, is that the tribe is, is going to be opening a school that'll take 370 kids out of the system, so...
The other thing that was very interesting was the impact of homes that are only used seasonally. It's huge. It is a huge driver in, um, elevating the costs of housing down here, just because that gets gobbled up, and people who are, who grew up down here or live down here and work down here, they can't, they can't compete in that market. So I would really strongly recommend making some time on May 31st or June 1st to go to these meetings. Um, Heather Harper is the Housing and Community Design Specialist for the Cape Cod Commission. She's doing a wonderful job, and she's, she, they picked a good consultant, so it's exciting. That was the Cape Cod Commission. Anything else?